Okay, well, good evening. We're gonna call this meeting to order then. Yeah, we'll bring it to the floor. So, you want to go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance? If you please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is that better? Can you hear me now? Okay. So, now we'll move to the third item on the agenda, the administration of votes to the reappointed commissioner Ward. Shall we do this? Yeah, go ahead and go. Do you raise your right hand? Repeat after me. Hi, Dean O'Ward.
Hi, Dean O'Ward.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
And without any mental reservation.
And without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Okay, congratulations.
Congratulations.
And then the fourth item on the agenda is our vote call.
Chair Nemeth, absent. Vice Chair French.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Olvera.
Here.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Thank you.
I'll move to excuse Chair Nemeth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so then we'll move to the fifth item of the agenda, the review of the agenda.
Steph has recommended changes to the agenda, but I would like to point out that there are two memos regarding two of the items on the agenda. The first one is item 9A, and that was some minor comments regarding the environmental document. Does not change the recommendation or the project. The second one is item 9D. It's a list of public works conditions that has been discussed with the applicant and negotiated between Steph and the applicant. So, with that project, we'll be having an amended recommendation. Other than that, there's no changes to the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. So, item six on the agenda. Can we get a motion to waive full reading of all resolutions on the agenda for this meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Motion passes four to zero. So, now we get to our consent calendar. Are there any public comments on the consent calendar item? If anyone would like to speak on any of the items that are on our consent calendar, be welcome to come up and do so. The only item on the consent calendar tonight is the approval of minutes from the Regular Planning Commission meeting of July 12th of 2018. If anyone would like to come up and speak on this, you've got three minutes to do so.
Move to close.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is item number eight, our consent calendar. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the Regular Planning Commission meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion passes four to zero. So then, the next item on the agenda is our public hearing. So, we'll move to item 9A on the public hearing.
This item will be presented by Megan Tagger.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The proposed project is a request to modify the personal storage facility. It's on, I'll just put it closer to my face. How's that? Better? Pardon our setup here. So, the proposed project is a request to modify the personal storage facility section of the municipal code and construct an approximately 86,000 square foot personal storage facility. The proposed facility is located south of Avenue R8 between Sierra Highway and 10th Street East, as shown here on the map. And it's within a commercial manufacturing land use designation and service commercial zone. The proposed personal storage facility consists of 10 one-story buildings ranging in size from 4,400 square feet to approximately 31,000 square feet, as shown here in the green. It also includes a two-story, approximately 2,200 square foot caretaker manager's unit with an office, which is here in the blue towards the front of the site. And construction of the site would also include pedestrian and vehicular access, parking landscaping, and trash enclosures. Two points of access are provided into the development, as shown here by the yellow arrows. One, the primary access point is going to be from Sierra Highway, and the secondary access will be from 10th Street East. The site also provides 10 parking spaces, two of which are located within the garage for the caretaker manager's unit, and the parking spaces are noted here in the black. There is a colors and materials board that we'll be passing down the line. Please be careful with it because it will fold in half since one side is really heavy, but so you can get a better idea. The proposed colors and materials for the storage facility are earth tones, which are consistent with surrounding development. And the storage buildings will be primarily constructed of metal, but the portions of the buildings that are going to be visible from the right-of-way on Sierra Highway and 10th Street East are going to be constructed of masonry block with decorative siding, as shown here on these images. The caretaker's unit will consist of S tile roofing, light-colored stucco veneer, and decorative wrought iron. And the unit is oriented towards the west, which is the Sierra Highway elevation, so that people can access the office from that side of the site. As proposed, the development standards related to side setbacks, gate visibility, and connectivity to future adjacent development have not been met. So, the applicant is requesting amendments to the zoning ordinance to accommodate those. The amendments include revisions to remove the requirement to provide a connectivity to future development, limit the requirement for a 10-foot-wide side setback only when the facility is adjacent to agricultural, institutional, or residential land uses, excuse me, uses or zones, and allow the entrance gate to be visible from the public right-of-way and require that gate to be architecturally compatible with the adjacent buildings. An initial study was prepared for the project pursuant to CEQA. The initial study analyzed the potential for environmental impacts, and due to the necessity of incorporating mitigation measures in regards to biological and cultural resources and noise, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared and circulated in compliance with CEQA guidelines. The planning commission has several options for this item. The first is to adopt the draft resolution. The second is to continue the item. And the third would be to deny the item. And option one is recommended. As Planning Manager Bruce mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, there is a memo on the dais regarding a letter that was received after the staff reports were done for the mitigated negative declaration. And it warranted minor changes to the document, but nothing that required recirculation or had any substantial change. So, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Does any of the commissioners have technical questions for Steph?
I do, the very first slide that you showed in regards to, yeah, I'm sorry, that one. In regards to entrances. So, is the public going to only use the Sierra Highway access or they're gonna have access from 10th Street and Sierra Highway?
The public will only use the Sierra Highway access. The secondary access is for emergency.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other questions for Steph? Well, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this item, be welcome to do so. Please come up. You'll be given three minutes. Kathy, are you timing the three minutes? Is that what we're doing?
Yeah, I can.
Is the applicant here?
Right here.
Does anyone have questions at the applicant? Or would you like to speak?
I'm the applicant. My name's David Spiegel with Spiegel Development. We've proposed this project here. We've spent lots of time with staff. I think this has been going on over a year now with different revisions and fulfilling all your obligations. I think that a couple of variances or changes to what we're asking for. Make the plan better. Side yard setback, for instance, that prevents nuisance or homeless people or trash collecting. We have one main ingress egress on the main street. We've exceeded parking. We think that this will blend in well in the community. It happens to also be adjacent to an older facility, and it's probably 300 yards from another facility. So, I think it's very compatible, and I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Anyone have questions for them? Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this matter?
Move to close the hearing, public hearing.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, we close the public hearing. Now, are there any commissioner discussion? Get a motion.
I move to adopt resolution number PC 2018-025, recommending city council approve zoning ordinance amendment ZOA 18-003, approving site plan review SPR 17-001, and adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program prepared for the project.
Have a second, Steph?
I don't think so. It was a point, it's not amended, right?
Oh, did we need to?
This wasn't amended. The mitigated negative declaration is amended. That is amended. Okay, as amended then, is my motion.
Okay, so then, any questions?
Vice Chair French.
Aye.
Commissioner Avery.
Aye.
Commissioner Olvera.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. So, the next item on the agenda, I give.
This item will be presented by Matthew Alcaron.
Good evening. The applicant, T-Mobile West, has submitted a request to construct an approximate 200-square-foot equipment enclosure adjacent to an existing major wireless telecommunications facility. As shown here, it's located at 2270 East Palmetto Boulevard, just south of the existing shopping center. The site plan shows the existing cell tower along with the one existing equipment enclosure and the proposed additional enclosure. The enclosure will provide screening for a new emergency diesel generator, and vehicle access is provided from an existing maintenance access road. The proposed equipment enclosure will match the existing with respect to material and height. So, the options for the planning commission are to adopt the resolution, approving the equipment enclosure, and also finding it categorically exempt, continue this item, or deny the project. And option one is recommended. And that concludes my presentation. Available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any technical motions for Steph?
I do, sorry. In regards to the landscaping, is that really necessary landscape around that particular item only because it's already pre-surrounded with a fence? And I didn't see what the need of adding necessary landscaping is only because it's not accessible to the fence except for the homeless person that has, or a section of the fence down that I would like to see put back over and enclosed, just for safety purposes alone. But I just didn't see the need for going in there and landscaping around that particular.
Well, it is a code requirement.
Okay.
So, we'll be working with the applicant to do native vegetation to meet the letter of the law.
Okay.
But not have green and irrigation and a lot of maintenance.
Okay, okay. And can we require the applicant to make sure that that fence is, because the fence is here and it's immediate due east of it, a section of the fence is fenced whole way, and I'm just concerned about the public traveling through that area.
We'll work with code enforcement and the property owner to get that fixed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Steph? Okay, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please come forward. You'll have three minutes.
My name is Dahir Abdullah, and I'm here on behalf of T-Mobile West LLC. And pretty much the purpose to install this generator is to provide backup power. So, any power outages, anything like that, we can secure, like, make sure everybody's phones is working at all times. That's pretty much the purpose. Do you all have any questions or anything?
How often do you service that generator? Just out of curiosity.
Well, I believe it's every month.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Just kind of curious.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Is anyone else here to speak on this item?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we'll close the public hearing. Are there any commissioner discussion?
The only thing I did see, I did see the signed posting for the application. I don't know where it was located at. Maybe I just missed it amongst all the buildings, but I...
Yeah, we had it off on...
Okay, I just told, oh, you know what? That's where the construction company was working at. That's why I didn't see it, okay.
It's a very long person.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number PC-2018-026, approving the request to construct approximately 200-square-foot enclosure for an existing major telecommunications facility and find that the project is categorically exempt from environment review.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Vice Chair French.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Olvera.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, so we'll move on to item 9C.
This item will also be presented by Matthew Alcaron.
Good evening. Again, this applicant, MMP Property, has submitted a request to construct an approximate 58,000-square-foot four-story hotel and amend the Palmetto Municipal Code to increase the building height in the C4 zone, as shown in the red highlighted area. The project site is located south of Avenue 08 and approximately 600 feet west of 10th Street West. Here is the existing vacant land at the proposed site, Zone C4, which permits the hotel use subject to review and approval of a CUP. This is the overall site plan, showing the entire three-acre site that will be used for the four-story 106th room with some of the amenities listed. 16 parking spaces are required, and 16 parking spaces are provided. Enhanced landscaping will be provided along Avenue 08, maintaining the 20-foot landscape setback. The proposed landscaping also exceeds the minimum 5% required. The proposed project will provide high-quality building materials, as shown. Earth tone colors are provided as well. Here is the south elevation as seen from 10th Street West. And here is the elevation that will be seen from State Route 14. So, in order to facilitate the increase in the height, the applicant has submitted a request for the zone ordinance amendment to increase the building height to four stories in the C4 zone. An additional height may be granted subject to approval of a CUP. By requiring a CUP approval, the city would facilitate review of possible adverse impacts and allow the planning commission to condition the design to mitigate those impacts on a case-by-case basis. Allowing the increase in height would encourage development of retail, major retail outlets, and large commercial complexes, which is the intent of the C4 zone. So, the options for the planning commission is to adopt the resolution, to continue this item, deny the project, and option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Are there any technical questions for Steph?
When you gave the west elevation that you said that you could see from that one, from the freeway elevation.
Yeah.
I guess in my view, that's not technically the elevation that the traveling public would see because it would technically be lower, correct? Because the elevation, Caltrans is freeways up here, and I just, my perception...
If you're northbound in the number three lane, you could probably see that.
Yes, maybe.
But if you're in the number one lane, maybe not.
Right, but in all...
But that is the view from the freeway.
Okay.
Well, that's the side of the building that faces the freeway.
Yes, but the freeway does...
Right.
The freeway is almost as tall in that section of freeway. If you go down to the lotland and go up, technically, you're almost seeing the top of the... Almost part of the top of the hotel, almost, in some respects.
Well, when you're immediately adjacent to it, yes.
Yes.
But as you're further south on the freeway, heading north, I believe you'll see most of that elevation.
Another question? On the air controller and the aviation that the requirements, is that all within code?
Yes, absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, then we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this matter, be welcome to come forward, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
My name's Jigash Shah. I'm the developer, or part of the partnership developing the hotel. We've been working with the staff for almost a year. We've looked at a couple of other sites. We're excited about bringing a new hotel to the community. And answer any questions.
Thank you.
If all goes well, when are you gonna break ground?
I'd like to say by the end of this year, but realistically, with the holidays and Thanksgiving and whatnot, getting the plans through, plan check and everything else, probably be January, early February. If we can get them done sooner, we're ready to go.
Thank you.
Is anyone else here to speak on this item? Motion to close public hearing? So moved.
Second.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any motion carriers? We'll close the public hearing. Any commissioner discussion?
No, I just want you to know I sat in on a site for quite some time just to visually, just the impact of, because I've been in hotels adjacent to a freeway, obviously. And you've been conditioned that you're using materials that'll be sound barrier-type materials, which I applaud you for that. I'm sure that's part of our planning discussions with our planning managers as far as conditioning around that. So, thank you for that. And it was like a beautiful hotel. So, I just, I sat there for a while and just kind of took it in and just kind of visually was trying to see exactly how tall the hotel was and, you know, if that was gonna be impacting the northbound freeway because that's coming home on 14 freeway. Anything after 3 o'clock is kind of quite a lot to handle sometimes. So, from 3:00 to 6:30, it's quite a, you know, quite a lot to see visually. I didn't know how much that was gonna impact the public, the travel public is what I'm getting at. So, thank you for that. It's a very nice project.
Any other comments? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution number PC 2018-027, approving the proposal down, recommending that the city council approve a proposal on this amendment.
Does he need to read all the way through the amendment?
That's fine.
Okay, and I will second that.
Any further discussion?
Vice Chair French.
Yes.
Commissioner Avery.
Yes.
Commissioner Olvera.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, and that takes us to the next item on our agenda, item 9D.
This item will also be presented by Matthew Alcaron.
Good evening. The applicant, Boma USA, has submitted a request to expand the Palmetto Aerospace Academy to add a private elementary school located immediately west of the existing high school, as shown on this photo. This slide shows the existing vacant land at the proposed site and a portion of the athletic field to the east. This is the overall site plan showing the proposed expansion. The proposed elementary school will serve the transitional kindergarten for sixth grade with a maximum enrollment of 721 students. Also listed is the construction plans, including the gymnasium, the cafeteria, the two-story classroom, the athletic field to the west, as well as the additional parking required. There will be an access road off of Avenue Q10 only for fire access. The... To accommodate the expansion, the applicant is also requesting to amend the general plan land use designation from CC, which is Community Commercial, to PF, which is Public Facility, and to change the zone designation from C3, General Commercial, to PF, Public Facility. This is consistent with the general plan and zone change approved for the high school. Enhanced landscaping will be provided along Palmetto Boulevard, matching the existing and also maintaining the 20-foot required landscape setback. Also, the proposed landscaping exceeds the minimum required 5%. The proposed project will provide high-quality building materials, as shown, and earth tone colors are proposed as well. This will match the existing high school. Here is the west elevation of the administration building and the gymnasium. We have two elevations, the west and the south of the proposed classroom building. The existing general plan land use designation shows the three vacant parcels as Community Commercial and the existing land use of Public Facility at the high school. So, this will be the proposed general plan and land use designation, making the parcels consistent. The existing zone designation, again, the three vacant parcels are C3, General Commercial, and they are proposing to align it with the existing, making it Public Facility. As mentioned earlier, the memo in front of you is from the staff and the applicant, which has agreed to modify the specific conditions for drainage and street improvements. So, the options for the planning commission are to adopt the resolution as amended, continue this item, or deny. Option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation. And available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any technical questions for staff?
I have a question about traffic impact, to have another school essentially there. We have a traffic people here. I just, I just... Okay, I'll wait. I know the public hearing's not open yet, but my name's Robert Kielpatrick with David Evans and Associates in Victorville. The address is 14297 Calm Street in Victorville. We are the traffic engineer who did the traffic study for the expansion and also the original high school, so answer any questions you may have on that.
Were you out there with Caltrans the other day when they were having a meeting out there? Did that concern that project?
They were probably wrapping up some of the construction work that was done as part of the high school project, and then there was also another project that was out there that ADTA did for the bus stop, so there was probably a meeting, or it might have been they're doing rehabilitation on it. The irony is, we did all that work, and they've come and rehabilitated the asphalt, so Caltrans could have been out there for numerous projects that are out there, but probably not specifically for this project.
And how are you expecting this new school to impact the already existing traffic flow there? I mean, are, what's the impact of the amount of cars that are going to be coming into this school in addition to what's already coming out?
Yeah, it's, there will be some additional traffic, but the mitigation that we've done, developed a mitigation plan for the project, is to make sure that we stagger the hours. So the high school will actually generate more traffic than the elementary school, but again, the elementary school will have a different hour. So if I can, for instance, what we've done is we've presented that grades, I apologize on my reading glasses on, but grades one through four will be arriving at 8:15 in the morning, and then four through six at 8:55, and then the high school arrives at 8:00. So we've staggered it, so we're about 20 minutes between, so that way we're not having all of it coming in at once. And so the irony is, the elementary school, even by staggering, is less than the high school in terms of impacts.
And the original high school, as far as the original traffic flow going through there, is that working well? I'm sorry to say, I haven't traveled over in that area recently as far as schools and all that.
Yeah, if I can, the school was open before the instruction at Palmdale Boulevard and 35th Street was done, so they were using 35th Street. Now that 35th Street is open, we'll be seeing how that works out next week when school opens. But it was designed and with staff's approval, we worked out all the circulation for the on and off-site to make sure there was no queuing on, you know, on the city streets. So the intent was that, again, if you've seen the original school, there's a queuing area, and the school has actually done an excellent job of mitigating. We came with a plan, but they've actually been able to work that plan and get it such that it's, seems to be working very well, where people are arriving. The drop-offs isn't not the issue, it's the pickup, because what will happen is, parents will arrive 10, 15 minutes earlier, and when they start queuing, it really works out nice. And I've seen it where they'll start queuing, and then when the school releases, you got people leaving, and then some of the stragglers coming behind it. So it actually, I've seen it, observed it when the high school was open, and it seems to be flowing very well. So we're anticipating the same scenarios for the elementary, and again, with less traffic, so it should actually work nicer than the high school.
So the elementary gets out before or after the high school?
The elementary, now for the release time, the elementary school actually get out ahead of the high school in the release time in terms of in the afternoon. One through, grades one through four release at 2:21, four through six will release at 2:41, and the high school releases at 3:00. So again, it's going to work out nicely, the elementary school will release, and then again, as they're coming out, then some of the parents for the high school will be arriving, so with that 20-minute, 20-minute leave time is actually going to be nice. So again, it was one of the things that we worked with the, as the traffic engineers worked with the applicant, is to say in order for this to work with the circulation, that we will need to stagger the hours, so that we don't have a situation where everyone's arriving and they're leaving at same, different times.
And if they find that doesn't work, is our, this is something we need to just ask the applicant, that if those queuing times do not work, as far as being able to absorb the amount of traffic, because people always get there early, like you talked about, that you stagger it even farther?
If this is out of the Planning Commission, you could recommend a condition to be added to the approval, that the site be reviewed after a reasonable period of time to verify whether or not this works.
And would that be under the traffic, under this amendment here, as far as the traffic?
The Planning Commissioner would need to recommend, make a motion including a condition, and that condition would need to have a time period.
And I would recommend, you know, give them a few months to get things worked out, and
then staff can go out there and verify that it's working properly.
And it's in the applicant's best interest to make sure it works, so...
Sure.
So what you, yes, the, working with them, yes, that's something that, if there's an issue, yeah, I'm sure that that's not a problem for the applicant to do minor adjustments to the pickup drop-off times, because it is our goal, their goal, to make sure it works also.
I have a question. I live in that area. I live right down the street from there, and when children are coming out of school, students, pedestrians walking, it is a traffic jam. I've been there, and for the safety of our community and our children, that, do you guys have anybody that does traffic control, was stop and go, or?
Yeah, I was going to say, we did do, at the high school, you'll notice that we're crossing guards at the intersection of Palmdale 35th, and I believe you're still planning on doing that. It was very important during construction. Again, I'm very pleased at how well, again, as the traffic engineer and the engineer was observed during construction how well it was working. I think you're going to see a little bit of a shift when the 35th being opened. I think we saw a lot of parents, because parents unfortunately were parking in north of Palmdale Boulevard, because they didn't want to go all the way around to 40th or 30th to get to the school. So we had a lot of pedestrians crossing Palmdale Boulevard. I'm envisioning, anticipating that, we're anticipating that that will be reduced with now that 35th is open. So I think we're going to see a little bit less of, you know, students crossing Palmdale Boulevard. But that was incorporated in the design. It was very important in the design of the intersection to accommodate pedestrians.
To me, Boulevard, that's the reason why I asked. You know, we have semi-sparks on the side of the freeway now that, I mean, on the side of the highway.
Right.
And I see a lot of students coming out there and, you know, doing rush hour, and we're adding more traffic, more students, and that was our, that's a good question.
Getting the permit approved for Caltrans was very painful for that project. Is that a good word? Very painful. Caltrans had a lot of, put a lot of conditions on the traffic, or the traffic safety aspects in terms of signage on Palmdale Boulevard, so it was, they were very diligent on that.
I don't know who's, technically, that's Caltrans right-of-way, right?
Correct.
And the trees that are on Palmdale Boulevard, are that, is that the responsibility of the business, or is that the responsibility of Caltrans? Because the only reason why I ask that is that the sign, as you're going east, that signifies, the orange sign that signifies that it's, you know, that this is a...
School zone?
A school zone, is completely covered up by a tree.
Yeah, that'd be Caltrans' responsibility to maintaining the site visibility along the, might have a situation with trees on private property, but the Caltrans would be responsible for making sure the sign's visible, so...
Yeah, just for, especially now with school coming up, I just, I was looking, and I was like, where's the sign, where's the sign? I see the flashing lights, and everything looks beautiful, but, and then...
I think those trees are being, some of the trees that block some visibility are actually on this property that'll be removed, so...
It's in the parcel immediately due west, so...
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other technical questions for staff?
For staff in regards to, so, school me real quickly in regards to the retention basin that...
Let's see, engineers here to be able to add to those questions?
Sorry.
No problem. My name is Barry Mons with Antelope Valley Engineering. I'm the applicant's engineer on getting the plans processed and approved through the city.
So my question is for you, because at some particular time, I'm assuming that basin is going to be filled up, so hence, my concern is that here in this amendment here, it says, "No nuisance water generated from this development shall be allowed outside the boundaries of this development unless authorized by this city engineer." So what is the mechanism if that gets full? And my concern is that it's, if it's not pumped and it's sitting and the water starts to become green and algae and what is the...
There's a percolation study or testing was done in the location of the basin, and the basin was found to have a high rate of percolation. With that, we anticipate that the basin will drain in just over a day, based on how much water it actually holds. It only, the basin is approximately six feet deep, as it's currently proposed. Only the lower, almost two feet, just under two feet of that basin is actually designated to hold water. The rest of that will drain through, so water will drain in and then drain out. So it's only the lower, like I said, less than two feet will be there, based on the high rate of percolation that we got when we tested it, and we got some really high numbers when we did the test, but we're using the lowest number, and we're looking at that, and it looks like it will drain within, just over a day.
Because that's a naturally sandy area, the area.
Yes, it is. It is very, a little on the sandy side there, and so the drainage really worked, from that standpoint, the percolation worked well. There is, I mean, obviously, we have seen basins around the area that do get quite green-looking and foul and so forth, and from an enforcement standpoint, that would obviously come back to the city. There are some measures within the city's ordinance and so forth that dictate that, you know, these things be maintained and so forth, and the city actually has emergency access rights to come in and maintain these facilities if needed. I know mosquito, or I should say vector control, is quite interested in some of these ponds of water that sit more than a few days.
And I was concerned because it was so close to that, and what, you know, that could potentially impact that neighborhood that's immediately adjacent to that, so...
It would probably impact the kids on the playground more.
Well, and...
Yeah, but yes, that should be...
Thank you. Any other questions?
I did just, in some of these, some of these conditions, they were starred, and I didn't know if that was any particular purpose?
That means that they are mitigation measures associated with the environmental document.
Okay, thank you. If you get those...
I like the idea of having a mandatory three-month evaluation of the traffic flows. If I was to make a motion, can you help me with the wording on that?
After the public hearing, yes.
Oh, excuse me. I thought we were to commissioner discussion, I will come back to that.
We are not. If you have any more technical questions for the staff, then we'll open the public hearing. And so if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this project, please state your name and your answer.
Good evening. I'm Laura Herman. I'm headmaster of the Palmdale Aerospace Academy. We are thrilled to be moving forward with a program that will serve students all the way from transitional kindergarten through graduation of high school. It's a powerful and wonderful thing. Our community is really excited, so we appreciate supportive staff and working with us and figuring out how to make this happen in a way that's best, that best serves our students, best serves our families, and best serves our community. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for them?
Does the school currently run from 7 through 12?
Six through 12, actually.
Six through 12, okay. That's what I thought when he was talking, high school and the hours for the high school. That includes that...
Middle school, high school, absolutely.
And you would be okay with us conditioning this?
If it takes me three months to figure this out, yeah, I'm going to be asking for help long before then. I will, I will add to that, with your permission, that one of the mitigations that we put in, because what we saw was happening is that people show up early, or they wait till, what we did was, we added supervision. We extended the time for supervision for students before school and after school, so that all the parents didn't feel like they had to show up right at 3 o'clock. We just assured them that, you know, we're going to keep the students right here, and you've got until, you know, 3:45, don't stress, just get here when you get here, and that really made a big difference as well. So there are lots of different things we can try.
I know at some of the schools, especially the elementary schools, parents will show up a good half hour early. It's one of the problems we have. It's one of the problems we see a lot of elementary schools. So I know there's a 20-minute stagger between, but how are you going to handle that if they start showing up 30 minutes before?
Well, right now, when that happens, because it does happen, so the loop road that we have in the back is quite long, and will accommodate a lot of queuing. So we just, we open it up 45 minutes early and let people start lining up. For the elementary school, there are also some systems out there where you can put a sticker on the car, we can scan the cars as they come in, we know whose parents are there, so we can get the kid to the car. The nice thing about, you know, little guys, is they're following directions. When you let out in high school, the kids go, and, you know, they're kind of into finding their own, you know, mom's car or whatever, but with the little guys, we can actually track who shows up and where they are, and I think that will actually speed up the process. So my staff's doing research into that right now, and they're very excited about those possibilities.
So there actually is some sort of sticker that you...
Yeah, and you can just scan it. You can use the scanner on your phone, and you can match kids to, I assume I don't have to put stickers on the kids, just the cars, you know, then we can match them all up, so...
That's why they have to register.
Yeah, but if they're willing, then that matches us up quickly and allows us to move things through more rapidly like that.
Yeah, that sounds great, yeah. One, they usually, when, in the one, in the elementary schools that I've dealt with, in PTA for a while, we dealt with this exact issue for a long time, and they empty quickly after school lets out, usually within 10 minutes, it's cleared out and done. But it's the before, where parents are queuing up, and that queue goes all the way down into the street, and that's the biggest issue, is before school lets out.
By staggering the start times, and given the fact that I'll have a lot of students who are siblings, so if you've got an older brother or sister who's in high school, odds are you're going to be coming in earlier, so I'll be providing supervision for the elementary kids, which will also kind of help to mitigate some of that, because you're absolutely right, that urge to pull up, park, and walk your little guy in, and that's acceptable, of course. So, yeah, we're trying to think of those things.
Yeah, it sounds like you've got some really out-of-bought ways to handle this. That sounds great.
We're excited.
I know traffic is one of the biggest issues that schools deal with.
Every school, everywhere I've ever been.
So thank you for that. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this item?
Hello again. There is one item I would like to clarify on the memorandum with supplemental conditions. The changes to condition number 47, there is a typo associated with that change. In that last paragraph, it says, "Construction of said local storm drain mainline is not subject to reimbursement." What we had negotiated with city staff on that item was that that should read, that the construction of said local storm drain mainline may not be subject to reimbursement. We are still in the process of working out all the fine details of the drainage system, and with the meetings we had with the city staff, they were agreeable to that language. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention at this point.
Is that the case, Rob?
The city engineer is nodding yes, that he's in agreement.
Thank you.
Does anyone else want to speak on this item?
I'll make a motion while we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so the new public hearing is now closed. Any commissioner discussion?
Can I go back to my hypothetical question?
That's right.
Yes. Can I just jump in and assume what the question is?
So it's the wording for asking to put a condition of three months after opening this school to do another traffic review, as you suggested?
My recommendation would be that after three months of operation of the elementary school, that staff review the circulation at drop-off and pickup times to verify whether or not queuing is going off-site. If queuing is not able to be accomplished onsite, then the applicant will work with the city engineer to revise circulation and other operational mechanisms necessary to ensure that queuing remains onsite.
Can we make that into a period that would be accommodating to the school as far as like, from, you know, from the beginning of the school and maybe even give them a couple more months until like, say, Christmas holiday in case? So that if there is something that really has to take place during that Christmas break, that they could actually make all that happen. So, it's, you know, it's good for you, gives you a little extra time, and then also gives the staff some time if they really have to make some major adjustments to let the parents know and to also allow the staff to do that. Would that be okay with you?
Yeah, that sounds great, dude. Do we have to put that in writing, or can we go with, I mean, that's a lot for me to remember on that.
Well, I think, I mean, there's, there's actually three separate amendments that the planning commission is contemplating.
And also paragraph 47 also.
There's the memo, then there's the change to paragraph 47, and then there's the addition of the condition that Rob just narrated.
Now, is that, would that be a change to the condition 89, or is this a separate, we'll give something separate? And Rob, it'll be 89 in the memorandum that we received.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. And I tried to track this to the packet, and it doesn't, I don't know what number 89 was.
It would be a separate condition.
It'd be a separate condition. So, is there a timeframe on this traffic signal warrant study? And should there be? When will this be completed by?
89 is going to be met while construction activities are ongoing.
So, did you want Rob to articulate that change?
Unless somebody else wants to try that motion.
I think that it's been articulated. It's in the record. I think we can draft an additional condition based on what he said.
And the meeting is recorded, so we don't have to remember it all.
So, if it's, if it's the pleasure of the commission to approve the item with all three of the amendments, you can make a motion to approve with all three proposed amendments.
Okay, I move to adopt Resolution PC-2018-028 with all three amendments as stated.
Have we finished the public hearing?
I was going to say, shall we finish the closed public hearing?
Oh, my God. I figured, pardon. I thought we closed the public hearing.
We can table that.
I keep wanting to close the public hearing.
We can table that until...
We did close the public hearing. We have a special discussion.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
You're ahead of me here. No, we're supposed to keep us on track. You know, we were good. We were good.
Throw you a curve ball on your first game.
Okay, my, is my motion acceptable to the lawyer?
Yes.
Okay, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
I don't need further discussion on this.
Vice Chair French?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Alvera?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Right, so we are on to item 9E.
This item will be presented by Rob Bruce, planning manager.
So, you don't look like Perry.
No. Perry had an opportunity to go camping in Yosemite, and I said, "Go. I'll do this."
Yosemite's closed?
Yeah.
I just heard Yosemite's closed.
It is closed.
I think that's a question, that one. Sorry.
Maybe it was Ben. Forget, but I was a nice guy this time. This item is amendment to the auto mall specific plan. The amendments will update the landscaping theme to reflect a more desert palette and the sign standards for the dealerships. The specific plan was originally adopted to create an automotive sales center for up to 15 dealerships. It is entirely surrounded by the trade and commerce specific plan. The proposed changes to the landscaping will reflect water efficiency when the existing landscaping is replaced. Replacement will happen over time as funding becomes available. This slide is an example of how the roundabouts could be treated with these amendments. This is an example of the entry monuments that are proposed for the, all the intersections leading into the auto mall. They also will be installed as funding becomes available. As part of the update to the specific plan, the auto dealers have requested that certain sign standards also be updated. The changes include modifying the monument signs to increase their height and area, as described on the screen. It is recommended that if this increase is approved, that a sign program be submitted prior to any new signs being installed to ensure design consistency among the dealerships. The dealers have also requested the addition of a 20-foot-tall freestanding sign, the same sign area proposed for the monument signs, with the addition of a digital display of up to 32 square feet. This display would be locked for 24 hours at a time. They have also requested that secondary building signs be increased from one foot in height to two feet in height to improve the legibility of these signs. On the screen is a graphic of the proposed 20-foot-tall pylon sign. The proposed changes will update the look of the auto mall and increase the allowable sign area to improve sign identification for the dealers. It is recommended that the planning commission approve the landscaping changes and consider the sign changes. If the planning commission wishes to recommend approval of the amended specific plan as drafted, option one is recommended. If the commission wishes only to approve the changes to the landscaping, then option two is recommended. If a planning commission wishes to modify the amendments to the specific plan, option three is recommended. That concludes the staff's presentation. I'm available for questions.
Any technical questions for staff?
In regards to the planters, the concrete planters, if you go in into the auto mall there, some of them are broken, cracked, the steel's showing through, and there's no consistency in what is planted within those planters. And it looks kind of, it looks very outdated. So, are we going to have, is the city going to have the authority to tell them what plants will be in there? As far as some sort of consistency, or I don't, I guess I just want them updated and I want them cared for. Because they're just kind of, it's either remove them or put something in them and make them attractive. Because I, obviously, the auto dealerships want to upgrade this. And to me, that just looks kind of, looks very unkept. And I know on, as you're coming off of what would be the south side of the mall off of that street, the property that is on the westerly side of the street across from the motorcycle dealership, who would maintain that sign, being that it's a vacant piece of property, and who would maintain that particular area?
There is a, currently defunct, but reorganizing an association of property owners. The major property owner in that area is the city. So, those vacant parcels are owned and controlled by the city. So, any improvements that are common improvements, the cost needs to be shared amongst all the property owners. A lot of it is within public right-of-way and can be borne by the city when funding becomes available. The specific plan does include a new plant palette. So that any new planting or any upgrading of existing planting needs to conform with the planting palette in the specific plan.
And they'll all be done at the same time?
It'll be done as funding is available.
But that's the city's responsibility?
It's a combination, depending upon exactly where we're talking about. Some of the areas are within public right-of-way. Some of the areas are on dealerships themselves.
And you said, and I just want some, you said this is a concept of the carriage way roundabout. This is not the final product here?
Correct. But we've got design criteria by which staff will be able to approve the ultimate design.
And is it similar to this?
Yeah, that, we had three or four different concepts, but this was one that was good at giving...
It's very attractive. It's much better than the torn-up grass that's there. And I realize why you want to utilize it, because it's a great, a great vehicle to show off your vehicles. But, you know, everything's been torn up, and I just love this concept. And I thought, okay, that's, that's really pretty, but now it's just a concept, and I just wondered what the...
Right, and that's what the, the point of the specific plan is, to get that criteria by which staff can review and approve these designs without having to come back to either the planning commissioner or the city council.
Any other technical questions for staff? Go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak on this item, please come forward.
Good evening. Rick Carr from Robertson Honda, representing the Palmdale Auto Mall Dealer Association. It is, to address your question on funding, it's like herding cats to get all these dealers to agree on something. And honestly, we're struggling as a mall. We are not doing as well as we should be. We're certainly not doing as well as the mall five miles down the street. We feel a lot of that is our visibility. We just, we can't be seen. Part of it's a signage. If you look at those signs, current, current height standards are six feet. They've been that way for 25 years, and I can almost park an Accord in front of one and hide the sign. We need to go higher. If you look through Lancaster, all of their signs are 11, 12 feet tall. We're just trying to create visibility. Yes, we all agree that the landscaping looks terrible. And we've been trying to work with the city, and again, we're herding cats. If we have a guideline of how they all, we want it to look the same. But the reality is, if I'm ready to move forward and do a roundabout and do my planters, and everybody else is five, six years down the road, that's why nobody's moved. Because we don't want part of it to look one way and the rest of it not to change. And, but if we have a guideline of, okay, this is what it needs to look like, we're ready to move forward, at least at our pace. As funding becomes available, we want it to look better on our part. But we need the city's help as well, and we struggled with that for quite a long time. But visibility and signage, that's our main issue. We really need to be seen. We agree that the displays are terrible, and that's not, that's the second or third landscape change that it is, those grass pads. Which grass is a terrible idea. I mean, that's a, talk about wasting water.
Well, now it is.
Yes.
But, I mean, if you'd asked me that question 10 years ago, I would have said, "Oh, it looks nice."
It does.
But now it's just, it's got oversaturated, and now the grass is...
The drawings that you have, the display pads, they're, those are very nice, very similar to what we were looking at. They might have a little bit more curve to them than what we can actually do. But the idea is to be able to display cars on concrete pads, not on grass, and then have a DG surface with drought-tolerant plants, something that looks like it belongs here.
So, when you say the dealerships are ready to go forward, and if the city isn't able to kick in any money, so I guess, and this is just a separate question, when can the dealerships do it?
It's going to come down to each dealership. It really is. Robertson Honda is ready.
Okay.
I can't speak for the other ones. I speak that we do need the change. We need the signage change. But as far as when they're going to do landscaping, we cannot commit. If they'll, if they'll sit down and finance it, then they might be able to commit. But we, we need to be seen, and those 20-foot signs, those are substantial. Something for some of us that can be seen from a freeway, it's hard to let people know that we are here.
I totally agree.
And you'll be going into city council and...
Yes.
No, I liked everything that I saw, and I totally agree with you, because Lancaster is much more visible from the freeway. So, I totally agree with you, so. Thank you.
Does anyone else here to speak on this item?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Any commissioner in discussion?
I liked every aspect of this. I, there wasn't any part of this that I didn't, I didn't think that wasn't necessary and, and serious upgrade to that area. And if that helps, obviously, the sales tax dollars go to the city of Palmdale, and I think that's, I think that's important in addition to the dealerships grabbing that traffic that is coming and going by on the 14 freeway. And if that helps you, I'm absolutely for that. I like every bit of this. I didn't think there was anything that was out of mind here. So, I want the staff and the dealerships to work together so the city can fund this or collaborate together.
You're welcome.
I appreciate you coming down and speaking on behalf, and I wish everybody else was here that does business right there with their gear. Thank you.
So, on that note, I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution PC-2018-030, recommending the city council approve SPA 18-001 in its entirety and find that the project is exempt from environmental...
Second. Second.
Any further discussion?
Vice Chair French?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Alvera?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. And that is the last of those, so we move to item 10. Staff communication.
You've got a memo before you showing you next month's agenda. As you can see, it's a little lighter than tonight's, so it'll require quite as much of your weekend to prepare for it. Other than that, should I answer any questions?
Running commissioner training.
Just want to thank Noel for taking some time out this evening. I appreciate the, I like doing it before and after, get you home a little early.
Yeah, we'll give that a shot. And the hope is that we can, we can do some training and review some, some issues that we have discussed in the past, get everybody up to speed while not forcing other commissioners to sit through training that they probably already sat through a time or two. So, I will send out a memo with the packet next week with the topics, and whoever's interested in the training can participate.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
I want to thank our assistant attorney here for the training that we had today as a new commissioner. You know, so many codes, so many laws you got to buy by. And we look forward to all the training we can get. Look forward to serving our community. Thank you.
I would just like to commend our vice chair for doing an awesome job tonight under a lot of pressure.
Well, thank you.
That was one of our biggest agendas that I've ever seen, so.
We've got a lot, we have a lot to do tonight. So, I just wanted to congratulate you on your reappointment.
Thank you.
And give a thought to Stacia, who is recovering and hopefully training tomorrow.
Sending prayers to her.
Absolutely. So, are there any other planning commission communications?
Good job.
We will adjourn to the regular planning commission meeting of Thursday, September 13th, 2018. Done.